All this meeting to order Tuesday, March 2, 2021, 7:00 PM. City of Somerton rate with council meeting. Vice Mayor Pizitas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock.
Mayor Geraldo Naya. Vice Mayor Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Martha Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Miguel Villalpando.
Present.
Councilmember Carlos Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Galindo.
Present.
Councilmember Jesús Roldán.
Present.
Mayor Coram.
Thank you.
Moving on, a call to the public, understanding that we have a list of members for the public wishing to address council.
Mayor, you have two folks. One is Ms. Mary Griffin Campbell and the other one is Mrs. Charlotte Thomas. They want to speak on behalf of one of the items, which is 8.1. I don't know if you want to wait until then or have them speak now. Mrs. Thomas?
Yes?
Okay, you can speak now.
Is there, okay, is there a reason why I'm speaking now and rather than at the time of the item on the agenda that's relevant?
Call to the public.
By and by the call to the public is for non-agenda items.
Mayor, council, the call to the public is, is a time for a person to speak on any subject, not just items on the agenda, for example, someone might, might come in and ask for a donation for a certain club, et cetera. So, call to the public is general, anything. It's a time, it's an extra time for you to speak, ma'am, but if you want to speak on the agenda item itself, really, that's really up to council whether or not they'll let you speak at that time.
Okay, I'm going to read from what's on the call to the public. It says, "This is the time for the public to comment. Members of the city council may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda." Okay, so it's, it's for non-agenda items. But if, if you prefer that we, that I speak now, then I will accept that.
I'll give you the opportunity to speak during the meeting, that's fine.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mayor, Mrs. Mary Campbell also has, she wants to speak on that same issue.
Anybody else? For the public wishing to address council? No one? One out?
No, we didn't receive anybody else.
Moving on to the same agenda. There's one item registered for the month of January 21. Your motion to approve this agenda?
Still no mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Gonzalez.
Present.
Assistant Vice Mayor Castillo out of favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All units. Item number one. Preparing March 2021, Cesar Chavez's son. There a motion?
No.
Second, there's a motion by Councilwoman Garcia, second by Councilman Roldán, all's in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Whereas, Cesar Chavez Estrada Chavez, a native of Arizona, born on March 31, 1927, celebrated as one of America's great Latino, American civil rights activists. And whereas, he was committed to organizing farm workers to advocate for safe and fair working conditions, reasonable wages, decent housing, to the definition of child labor. And whereas, Cesar Chavez and the Latino community worked together in the struggle for justice, to defend the poor and return dignity, respect, and hope to workers. And whereas, his nonviolent approach to creating social justice gave him an exemplary role model for working people nationwide, resulting in improving the lives of many Americans. And whereas the life and service of Cesar Chavez continued to inspire us to seek progress and justice by people means. And whereas, Cesar Chavez peacefully passed away in his leave on April 23, 1983, in Yuma County, marking an end to an era of dramatic changes in American society. Now therefore, I, Mayor Geraldo Naya, City of Somerton hereby proclaim March 2021, Cesar Chavez's son, in the City of Somerton and virtual citizens to reflect upon important achievements of this great person.
Item number two. That was the presentation.
Presentation?
The motion. So, item number two, presentation by retail coach company, update of retail recruitment numbers done up to date. So, I'm ready to sit here.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So, we have Austin Farmer from the retail coach that's going to provide an update of the retail strategies. So, Austin, are you? Can you hear us okay, Austin?
I, I can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, good, all right.
Great.
What your?
Great, thank you. Thank you for having me, Mayor and council. I wanted to give you an update on where we're at in the process of recruiting new retailers and developers to the community. And wanted to really just focus on where we've been and ultimately where we're at in that process and activity that we have made since our last update to council. And so, since our last update, we focused on three key areas for the community. The first is continued recruitment of grocery targets. So, really focusing on grocery store growth and trying to identify potential grocery store targets to bring to the community. We, we started with a broad range of grocery targets, really looked at national and regional grocery chains and have been recruiting them for the community. But we've also added some smaller regional grocery chains as well and have been communicating with their real estate departments, their brokerage teams that they use, site selectors, really trying to focus on where there's grocery opportunity and trying to get them to look at the community. The, the second focus on that end is we, we broaden that focus beyond just grocery stores and added additional retailers and restaurants outside of that grocery segment. And again, to the point that was made by Councilmember in one of our early updates, we, we look at a broad mix of retail opportunities, not just with large national brands that might be looking for some, some larger urban populations, but really a mix of where there's actually voids in the community and looking at regionally some of those smaller, more independent chains that may only have a couple of locations. So, really broadening though outside of grocery and saying, okay, where's their opportunity for the community as a whole now that we've gotten that grocery recruitment started? And then we began the recruitment of those retailers and restaurants, and we've also included developers as well. So, a lot of times from a retail development perspective, retailers will drive new growth and they'll pick a market they want to come to and that will lead the growth there. But also, developers play a key role in that, that growth in certain markets. So, we've actually reached out to regional developers that are active in the state to see if there's a potential to lead through development. So, to get a developer who might be interested in a site in the community, whether that be on 95 or kind of through that core central downtown corridor, or look at developable land. So, we've actually started recruiting developers to the community as well on top of those additional retail targets. And so, focusing specifically on that recruitment of grocery targets, like I said before, we've continued that grocery recruitment. And the real key activity that we've been focused on specifically within that grocery segment since our last update is we've been sending market data and available sites to grocery contacts. So, we've been communicating with those core grocery brands that we see as fits for the community. We've been sending them cellphone data, showing the demographics for the market, where people are coming from, that retail trade area, sending them available sites and saying, hey, we think this would be a great site for you with a lot of the future growth, with the planned school and park and development that's happening here. So, really making sure that they have the latest data and really the, the latest news on the community along with just that data and opportunity. The second is we've set up calls with those grocery prospects. So, we've actually called on their real estate teams, their brokers, site selectors, and called and communicated with them in person about the market to get their, their input on the market, of whether or not they're interested. And then if they're not interested, what it would take to get them here. And so, really trying to identify things that the city can do if there's something that is preventing them from coming to the market, to really hone in on, okay, what, what can the city do to overcome some of those obstacles if they don't think they're a good fit for the market today? And then third is following, following up with them based on that feedback and that potential opportunity level. We are keeping some of those larger grocery brands in the pipeline. So, some of those that may have said, "The market's not quite there yet," but it could be in six, 12, 18, 24 months, keeping them in the pipeline, but focusing on some of those more short-term opportunities. So, some of those smaller, more independent grocery chains and really just making sure that we're focused on where we see opportunity within the, the range of those different grocery targets. From the, the second bucket I talked about, broadening the focus to include additional retailers outside of grocery, we looked at the market and ran a couple of additional data analyses on the market to identify where there's additional prospects for the community. So, broadening that out from grocery and looking at the entire retail spectrum. And so, we, we did two key things there. We ran what's called a retailer void analysis on the community. And what that does is it determines additional retail targets specifically for the city based on who's active in the state and in the region. So, retailers and restaurants in Arizona that currently are developing in Arizona or that are in the region, so Arizona, California, really across the Southwest, that don't currently have a location in the city. And then what we can do with that, this, if you have the presentation in front of you, that snippet on the right side that shows retailers that has a little void stamp next to them, those are retailers or restaurants that are active in the region but don't have a location in the city. And so, what that does for us is it really helps us hone in on who's actively doing things in the community or around the community, who has a distribution channel or a pipeline, who realistically could expand into the market. And then helps us focus in based on where their nearest locations are. And so, a couple of examples there from the coffees. Dutch Brothers coffees, both have locations within either six and a half miles or eight miles of the community. And for a coffee chain, we don't think that that's necessarily too close. And so, that helps us really focus on, okay, which of these grocery or which of these coffee restaurants are potential fits for the community? We know that they're around the community, but they, they don't have a spot in the community. So, really focus on that void and where there's some opportunity with retailers actively doing things. The second key activity there is what we call retail fusion analysis. And what that does is, is we're able to use the existing retailers in the community and, and look at comparable developments across the state and across the country to determine what other retailers typically co-tenant or, or build or develop around those existing retailers and which of those are missing in the community. So, we can go and find comparable developments and say, oh, okay, they have these two or three retailers in a similar development that we don't have here. They would be a good fit for this, this site or for the community, and let's start recruiting them. And so, throughout that process, we, we ran both of those analyses and actually came up with a list of 30 additional retail and restaurant targets to recruit to the community. That, that 30 number, those 30 retailers and restaurants is kind of arbitrary. That's not the most that we'll do. We, we're working through that list of 30 right now. And as we get feedback from those retailers and restaurants, if, if they are interested and we can start working through the pipeline of potential targets that want to be in the community, we'll add additional behind that. And then as, as we get feedback from some of those retailers and restaurants that maybe the market's not a fit for them right now or they're not interested, we'll also go back and say, okay, let's add more, let's go back and look at that analysis and add additional retailers to that pipeline. But we've started recruitment of those 30 additional retail and restaurant targets. And so, the, the real key activity there, what we've been focused on certainly for the past three to four weeks has been putting together what we call custom feasibility packages for those retailers and restaurants. So, really putting the data together specifically for them that shows the market opportunity, Somerton data, the demographics, cellphone data, trade area, and then ultimately showing them where their, their closest locations are and, and really showing them that there's an opportunity there. And so, throughout that recruitment process, we've sent them that market info, feasibility packages, and have been communicating with them about the market, trying to, to really drive the interest there. And ultimately, we are essentially about halfway through our, our recruitment process. And one of the things on the last slide there that we always try to highlight is, is that retail recruitment is a process and not an event. So, we still feel like we're very early in the process. We still have another at least six months of recruitment to go through the end of August. And ultimately, we'll probably run a little bit longer than that with some of the retail conferences that are coming up and being rescheduled for the end of this year and kind of into summer. But ultimately, we, we feel pretty good about the process and where we're at. We're ahead of schedule to where we typically are in communities when we go and do the recruitment. But our core focus for those next six months is to continue recruiting those existing retail and restaurant targets, to focus on those development targets as well. I actually have a, a call this week with a developer out of California who's interested in Arizona's communities. And so, we're going to talk about the community, talk about available sites, the retailers that they typically build developments for, and really focus on opportunity from all sides, whether that's the retail and restaurant targets themselves or developers or, you know, something in that, that hemisphere, whether it be from the corporate side or the development side. We're going to continue to, to schedule calls with retailers and brokers and book meetings at retail conferences. We're just now coming out of COVID. And so, we're starting to see some of the retail conferences that we didn't have last year be rescheduled. So, we'll be focused on setting up meetings at those conferences. In some cases, that may mean that we'll get Hector involved if he plans on going to those conferences. Or if, if he's unable to, we'll schedule those meetings and have those meetings and loop him in after we actually have those meetings at those conferences. And then we're, we're going to keep adding additional prospects as we get that feedback and as we get those retail targets moved through our recruitment pipeline, we'll continue to add additional retail and restaurant prospects. So, with that, I'd love to answer any questions that you have or Hector, if I missed anything, I'd love to, to talk to anything if. Address.
Austin. I do, Mayor. This is Councilmember Gonzalez. As, as I'm reading your, your slides here, I notice that, it says that you have studied a recruitment for 30 additional retail and restaurant targets. But at the same time, I'm looking at the, not interested, not by now, or interested. You've got a zero, zero record on that. Is there any, this behind that?
That, that's just a snapshot that, that we pulled from our system. That, that's not the full updated list. So, that, that doesn't have the full list in there. We, we can make that full list available to you, but it, that snapshot on the slide is, is not current with the, the feedback that we have.
Yeah, you know what, I was actually going to ask, you know, something, because I am looking at, at your presentation. If you said, and, and I kind of see that feedback from Albertson, I see the feedback from the, the Basher. And it says foodie, but then it was kind of cut off. If you provided a, a list of the ones that have been hard known? Did you contact it?
Yes, we, we have a list that we can provide to you. It, it's not all captured on those screenshots, but we, we have a list and we have a dashboard, a recruitment dashboard that we update after each round of recruitment. So, I, I can follow up after this meeting with that, that full updated list with the feedback from those retailers.
And what has been the major barrier from what you see from those, you know, retailers that you've contacted?
I think the biggest one to this point, and, and we had talked about this a little bit initially, I think there's, there's a perception issue that when a, a lot of retailers and developers have looked at Somerton in the past, they've, they've kind of considered you an extension of the Yuma market. And, and so, some of the initial conversations we're having is that some of the retailers haven't necessarily considered Somerton a separate market. And so, they may have just initially thought that their locations in Yuma were, were capturing the entire market. And so, we're trying to, to really hammer on the, the retail trade area data and show them that this market can stand alone, certainly in specific categories like that grocery category. The, the other just kind of initial surface level response that we've gotten when there hasn't been a ton of interest has just been market size. And Albertson's is a great example, you know, there, some of those larger grocery chains are looking at more urban dense population centers as they're starting to, to really expand out some of their new locations. And so, those have been really kind of the two biggest hurdles in, in what we've heard directly from retailers is just the, the market size and then really kind of educating them on the market and showing them that you're not just an extension of that Yuma market.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. To continue working with you and also giving you information, we have a link to the dashboard. Austin, you are getting this in the last report. So, you can actually go into the link and see the update.
Yep. I'm sorry, real quick, we, we update that at, at the end of every round of recruitment. So, we'll have that, that dashboard fully updated with our latest round of recruitment and the feedback we've received by the end of this week. So, we'll, by the end of this weekend, a Friday, we'll have all of the latest feedback in that dashboard.
I know the manager's minute addressed the conference here, but it gets bored, it's a lot of traffic, a lot of conversation and a lot of misinformation going on. I don't know if we could, at least, does this part of the presentation and put it on our website or do something and just, you know, think what we can do because there, there is a lot of disinformation. Of course, a lot of people don't come to the meetings, but it's, it's out there and, and it's just, you know, a lot of those folks, they would see what the city's doing and, and what obstacles we have. And I think it minimizes a lot of the topics that they have. Most of it was just people not understanding how enterprise works and how the city fits in this whole business world.
Absolutely. And I'm not sure that, that I would recommend putting that entire recruitment dashboard out there, but, you know, we, we can certainly provide something that shows what the city's doing on, on this end and how we're actively out there recruiting. I will say this, we work in, in 38 different states at the moment. And for a community your size, you're, you're very progressive. You actually are doing a lot more from an economic development perspective. And Hector has a, a lot of activity going on, on the development side that most communities your size don't have. And so, I, I think that's encouraging. I think you're, you're doing what you need to do to really focus on that future vision and, and get out there ahead of some of that economic development work. So, I, I would just say that I, I think you guys are doing a great job. And, you know, there's, there's always a perception that, that cities aren't doing enough from an economic development perspective. But from, from my side and my perspective of working with a lot of similar sized communities, you're, you really are doing a lot of the right things and going through the process ultimately to get to where you're going to land some of these retailers and restaurants.
I'm pretty sure rather than late, you know, because I think the community is really going to measure, you know, I think effort goes a long way, but, you know, we want results at the end. And, and just like Mayor said, I mean, those, those, you know, Facebook, those social media posts, you know, they, they've been here for a while and, and we're in dire need of a, of a grocery store. That's why, you know, it's important that our community understands and sees the effort that we as council are, we're, we're really trying, but there's some barriers that are out of our control. You know, and, and, but it, and, you know, I just don't want it to go down as a lack of effort on our part. And I know the effort is being, is being given from all of us here. So, I'd say I agree with Mayor, let's make sure we communicate that to our constituents and, you know, we'll keep trying with the happens.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yeah. Listening to the whole presentation and, and not necessarily worried or concerned about what's going on on social media, my, my biggest issue is that when these presentations are being done, we need to be aware of, of why, what barriers we, we have, just like Councilman Castillo meant, as for those barriers, those are the type of stuff that we need to be, need to be discussing right now. Not, oh yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to recruit another 30, another 30 potential companies. Well, if those potential companies already have the same obstacles as 10 that failed, why bother even going after those 30? We need to be discussing and we need to be aware of what those barriers are in order to try to, try to eliminate those barriers. So, when, when these presentations are being done, that's the type of information that I need in order to evaluate whether this process that we're going through is, is efficient or is adequate for us.
Agreed.
I will, valid point, I, I'll work with Hector to, to get you a summary of those, of the feedback that we've gotten to this point. By the end of the week, we'll, we'll have that to you with a kind of a detailed summary of, of what those objections are and ultimately what we think, you know, the, the role of the city should be in addressing those and really working through, to your point, how to proactively address those.
Other questions?
Yeah. Austin, I, I think what we need to find out is, honestly, I know that many of the grocers have said no for, for some of the reasons, but essentially, Mayor and council want, want information from those grocers as far as, is it the demographics that we currently have? Is it the population, obviously demographics in terms of household income, age? That type of information is very crucial for us and not only for Mayor and council, but for the community to find out the reasons. Because I, I think many of them, these are the reasons why. Dutch Brothers is a perfect example, Starbucks, even Albertson's. If, if there is disposable income within our community, that's what they're targeting. And I think this is the crucial information that Mayor and council are, are discussing.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll get you a breakdown of those in, in greater detail.
Thank you.
Move on to item number one. New business discussion of possible action to approve our new commerce center subdivision, preliminary five case number, CLM 210004, and current file subdivision class case number, CLM 210005.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, planner two Saul Albor will be presenting this item, and I will be available also for any questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is the concurrent approval request for preliminary plat case PLN 2104 and final plat case PLN 05. This is for the Parkview Commerce Center subdivision. A, this is located at APN 19533028. Could we go to the next slide, Andrea?
Thank you.
So this is also known as 1298 West Main Street. It's a 19.87 acre parcel owned by the City of Somerton and we are actually the applicants in this case too. It is located generally west of Cesar Chavez Avenue and north of Main Street. It is currently zoned C2 slash infill incentive overlay. We just added the infill incentive overlay zoning classification last month, so that's new. The current use, well, actually the former use of this parcel was lease agriculture. I just found out recently that the lease expired on this parcel for the, for the farming, so it is technically vacant right now. And the proposed use is a eight lot commercial subdivision. Could we go to the next slide, please, Andrea? This is the proposed layout of the Parkview Commerce Center subdivision. Eight lots ranging in size from 0.99 or one acre to 4.7 acres. It will be, it is proposed to be accessible directly off of Main Street on a private road, which will lead to a roundabout exiting to a proposed future Avenue F and a quarter extension. So it'll be accessible on that private road from either Main Street or the future Avenue F and a quarter. The Avenue F and a quarter, it won't, will probably end up renaming it to something more easier to remember for most people, but this is the road that'll go up to the high school in the future too. On the inside of the subdivision, the lots and future businesses will be accessible all on private roads. And it's actually, the whole project itself is actually accessible by foot, pedestrian, via the multi-use pathways that we have existing along Main Street. Any questions so far from the council? Can we go to the next slide, Andrea? Thank you. So before we got to this point, to the subdivision stage, we've had three zoning cases in the recent past related to getting this subdivision to where it is right now. Last year, we had a lot split done. You may remember this was originally a 55 acre parcel and it was split into a 20 acre, which is the subject parcel in tonight's case, and a 35 acre parcel. So that's the first case in the recent cases, lot split case PLN 20-04. Second, there was a rezoning case which rezoned the bottom 10 acres of this parcel from R3 identity residential to commercial. So before the 20 acre parcel was zoned half residential, half commercial, after this rezoning case, it's all commercial now. And there was also a concurrent minor general plan amendment case, which was done when we did that rezoning last year, and that's related case of PLN 19-018. And then the maps there show exactly what I just summarized. So it was residential and commercial before the subject parcel, but now it's just commercial. Any questions on that, Mayor and Council? So potential uses and regional impact. The lots are set up and will be large enough to accommodate quite a few uses that the city is actively pursuing, things that the community needs, which include hotels, large retail, general retail, offices, medical complexes, restaurants, service stations, indoor entertainment, and many more. So it's a lot of exciting things that could go into that subdivision, many things that we want to see in this community, that we need in this community. And we think that the lots will be lar, are, actually no, we know that the lots will be large enough to accommodate a variety of uses. This project is fully compatible with the existing, with the recently adopted 2020 general plan with all the goals and all the elements. All that information is, can be found on the staff report. I just want, I'll touch a little bit on it. The land use calls, the land use is commercial, this is a commercial development. The map that you see on this slide is our growth area. This is the part of the, part of Somerton where we anticipate growth occurring in the next 10 years, where we have readily available infrastructure and the project is actually right in the middle of it. So this is right where it needs to be. Fully compliant. This project will bring many new commercial opportunities to the City of Somerton and it will increase the residents' quality of life because we'll have new uses, new services in our residents will not have to drive to the City of Yuma for these things. The project will also is anticipated generating hundreds of new permanent jobs in service jobs, medical jobs, office jobs, and the light. The elevation shown there is a rendering from the zoning case last year, which shows what a potential strip type building showing a, or a shopping center might look like. That could be located on one of those larger lots. And as mentioned before, the site is zoning, zoned appropriately, so no further processes are required beyond this subdivision approval. Any questions from the council or mayor at this point? So staff does have a recommendation for the city council, and that is to approve preliminary plat case PLN 2104 and final plat case PLN 2105, subject to the conditions listed in exhibit A. I'll go to exhibit A in a moment, but I also want to mention while I'm here that the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Somerton recommended to approve this preliminary plat case and final plat case at the last regular meeting on February 22nd, subject to the conditions in exhibit A. Can we go to the next slide, Andrea? These are the conditions of approval for both cases. They are standard conditions. Number one, all future developments shall comply with all applicable codes of municipal, state and federal level. Number two, the owner shall be responsible for verifying utility availability, negotiating any access issues with adjacent properties and resolving any underlying matters not revealed during the due diligence period, standard condition. Number three, the development shall comply with the subdivision regulations, development standards and use regulations of the Somerton subdivision ordinance and Somerton zoning ordinance. Another standard condition. And number four, developer shall comply with all water retention, environmental engineering, planning, landscaping, safety and design regulations and standards prescribed by the city and by any other applicable jurisdiction. Any questions on any of those conditions from the council? Mr. Ray and Council, that concludes my presentation of this case.
Any questions or comments from council? I just wanted to point out that I mean, I think this is something that Somerton does need, you know, for its future potential growth, you know, it will improve that quality of life, you know, for our residents. We were just discussing, you know, the possibility of a grocery store, you know, and this would be a perfect location. So I want to thank staff for their, their hard work on this and thank you for that.
Thank you, Austin.
Any other comments or question, Council? Okay, I'm going to give an opportunity to Mary Griffin Campbell to press counsel.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council and Summer City officials to allow me to speak tonight. My name is Mary Griffin Campbell and I'm a third generation Somerton farmer. I represent my brothers and sisters, as well as the next two generations of Griffins that are part of this farm. I attended the Somerton Planning and Zoning Meeting, the Azum, last week and was allowed to share some thoughts on that occasion regarding my desire to encourage the committee to vote against the recommendation to approve the preliminary and final plats for the Parkview Commerce Center division. You have my comments in the packet that I hope you've reviewed, so I don't really have to go over all of that again. But I must say, what I just heard about this project is in the middle of the growth area plan for Somerton is very, very worrisome to me. The general plan speaks often about the importance of ag. And when I attended the Farmers Coalition meeting in November of 2020, it was repeatedly mentioned that ag was the priority. I'm not getting any of that tonight from this meeting. I, in fact, I'm pretty shocked about what I've just heard about what Mr. Farmer presented. But instead, I do want to ask that you take time to make a decision on that project that will affect Somerton for many years to come. Don't push yourselves to vote tonight on this. I want you to please reconsider the project. Each time we drive from Yuma and drive, drop off the Mesa, we have the amazing sight of incredible green fields that have always supported the businesses of this town and those who have lived here. These fields continue to do just that. Yes, it is this valley that makes up the winter lettuce capital of the world. Let's do our best to keep it that way and removing farm ground will make it falter. You don't want to be the city of San Luis and you don't want to be the city of Yuma. You want to be Somerton, different and special. Somerton is special because it is the agriculture community center of the Yuma County. And let's keep it that way. Making Somerton bigger is not better. Bigger creates many problems, for example, crime and increased security costs, maintenance and power requirements. The list goes on and on. Embrace what you have and bring back the culture that makes it special. Instead of building large commercial buildings such as a hotel, which by the way, there's one just up on 95 and it's rarely full. And that was brought up at the P and Z meeting last week. And, and I'm actually quite shocked about what Mr. Farmer just talked about, bringing in all of these other places that are not local shops. They're all big building and coffee shops. You have those in town already. Utilizing Main Street, those empty buildings and empty lots is what needs to happen. At the P and Z meeting, they spoke of providing incentives to businesses to infill. Bring the craftsmen and the artisans to town, the ironworkers and the potters, the bakers, painters and woodworkers to sell their wares. There are many gifted people out there who could make this town work for you. This will bring visitor to Somerton, but not make it bigger. You'll feel the economic impact as these shops thrive. You'll allow the local restaurants to stay open. There are many examples of small towns in parts of Arizona that make this work. Look what happened to Bisbee when the artists moved to town. Look what happens when the tamale festival comes to Somerton. You don't need to build new construction to make this town a thriving economic Mecca. You just need to be different than those cities like Yuma or San Luis. Utilize those older buildings that are historical and beautiful. Statistics show that if you have a local business, 80% of that revenue stays in the community, but if you have a franchise, 70% leaves. There are already enough franchises in Somerton. Don't encourage more. Yuma and San Luis have enough for all of us. We need to be different. We need to be local. I understand that you want to brand Somerton. Keep agriculture as your brown, brand. You will never get it back if you take away the agriculture land. This is a precious resource that has been given to all of us. Don't waste it. Please choose to vote against this project. I really appreciate your time and I hope you will seriously consider what I've said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Charlotte Thomas?
Yes, I'm going to defer largely to Mary's poetry and heartfelt expressions of a different vision for Somerton. I will say, you have my written comments, and so I'm not going to read those at this point, given what Mary has put before you of a different vision, a more local vision, a more home vision. But for, this proposal is not fully compatible with the general plan. It is not compatible with the infill plan. And the general plan states the value of agriculture. This goes completely against that stated value of preservation and enhancement of agriculture, and it goes against the infill plan. As Mary referred to, there are vacant spots in the downtown of Somerton that could be filled with much more attractive local businesses and artisans. And as Mr. Farmer noted, that the economic situation presently is not likely to support these larger enterprises. Stores are closing. That's not, retail storefront is not the way of the future. And so to start attracting or attempt to attract that kind of business, I think is going to be fruitless. So I, I heartily affirm what Mary has said, and I would really like you to seriously consider the vision that she's laying out that is based in Somerton and is of Somerton, not like everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? I would like to ask the comment, the system with the general, general plan. What was the, in the general plan, what did this area, what was it zoned for or what was it planned for?
Mr. Mayor, at the most recent general plan update, the, actually no, even before the general plan update, we did a land use map amendment last year to change this 20 acre parcel from residential and commercial to just commercial. So the, the, the fact is, is that this proposal is fully compatible with the land use classification of the general plan. It's a commercial property and it, this is a commercial proposal, fully compatible in that respect. The growth area portion of the general plan actually calls for how far Somerton is anticipated to grow for the next 10 years. I believe there is a map in the I believe there is a map in the presentation that shows the growth area. Um, Andrea, if you just go back a couple of...
Yeah, it's, it's just a little stuff.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor and Council, Carmen Juarez, Community Development Director. Just to give you a little bit of background on this particular area.
There it is.
We have the 2010 general plan. Eleven years ago, the update, that plan identified this particular area for residential and commercial. That's the land use that we had in 2010. In 2013, we created and, um, a council approved the downtown redevelopment plan, which also included this area as part of commercial and a part of residential. We came to 2020 with the update to the general plan, which also has, um, this area identified as residential and commercial. So, um, from the past eleven years, we've been working with some of the goals and objectives in the 2020 general plan and also the 2010 general plan that identifies this area as potential, um, commercial and residential, low-density residential and high-density residential. So this is not new. We've been working with the goals and objectives of the general plan, two general plans now, and those are pointing out to this, um, eventually this, this goal. This is the, um, the, the last phase of this, this process with two general plans and the redevelopment plan. The infill incentive overlay plan is another tool that we have hoping that we are going to attract those businesses that are going to come in into the, um, existing part of town. That's, that's another tool that, um, council was gracious enough to, uh, adopt not too long ago. And that is, we are using that to fulfill and, and these, these areas here within the, the, the Main Street corridor. But we also have another need, uh, that the residents of Somerton are, have been asking for. And the general plan is that. It's a guide that is coming from the residents. That's how this area has been identified as residential and commercial. It, it has been at least eleven, twelve years, or even more, when that area was, at one point, uh, the land use was for agriculture. It, it hasn't been for the past twelve years at least. So this is not a new plan. This is not a new idea that we have. This is something that we have been doing following the, the general plan.
Mayor and Council, sorry, uh, what was on the city attorney? And, and because I was involved in the, in the negotiating of buying this parcel ye- years ago, uh, this was bought years ago in response to, um, in response to having the, the Somerton High School be brought to Somerton. So we were thinking of a city park or complex. That's why we bought the fifty-five acres. Everyone knew at that point that ag was going away. Uh, so the, the fifty-five acres were bought to assist the high school, to promote education, perhaps even at some point, uh, talking about AWC coming into town. So we've been leasing this for farmland, but, but I think the intent has always been that the Somerton residents were going to get, uh, a, a park or a complex or something that, that would enhance quality of life here in town.
And Mr. Lozano just made a, a, a big, big, uh, point, uh, about the, uh, fact that we, the city has been leasing these two ag uses, which is actually a legal non-conforming use, because the land use in the general plan is for commercial and residential. So is the zoning district in the zoning code. So basically, ag operation on this particular area is considered legal non-conforming, because it's, it's, it's not what the land use in the general plan or the zoning district in the zoning code, uh, would allow as a permitted use. So, uh, we're not changing agriculture, um, land use whatsoever. This is just a legal non-conforming use that is being abandoned in order to bring a permitted use in the land use, uh, in the general plan. So that's, that's the difference.
Other questions or comments, council? There are motions.
Let me come motion to approve preliminary flat case PLN two-one dash zero 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 four, concurrently with final flat case PLN two-one dash zero 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 five, subject to the conditions listed in Exhibit A.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Castillo. That's a second by Councilman Galindo. All those in favor?
Aye. Any opposed? We should care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors?
I, I just want to add, um, this cases, you know, we've seen this meeting. Here we want retail, then there's other people that don't want growth. So it's just, uh, you know, what we go as council members, there's always a balance in it. And actually with the, uh, another tool, different and just diversifying our, our tools for, to, uh, economic development. And when, uh, you know, as far as the infill also, we're going to have our retreat, and we also need to start looking at, you know, downtown redevelopment. Hopefully during the next years, we start working on that too. We have that plan sitting for maybe five, six years, so. But it, it's a balance, and we've been concentrating our resources on West Side. Also, and, and, uh, the redevelopment of downtown, oh, oh.
Not accurate. Not accurate.
Item number three, such an impossible action to award the lowest... Number two. Is this an possible action to authorize Somerton Public Fire Department to apply for Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety?
Here in council, the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety opened up a new grant period. This is the same grant that we applied for last year, in which we bought the, the new Jaws, which are already going to be delivered here in the next two weeks. Uh, the original grant that we applied for was fifty thousand dollars last year. The only award was thirty thousand, and so we had to do a lot of, uh, shopping with the vendors in order to get the basic tools we needed, and we weren't able to buy the balance. In this grant period, I'm wanting to apply for the balance of equipment that we need to have, those things that are necessary for the complicated extracations that we have. Uh, we just had, uh, multiple fatalities of fifteenth and D, and one of them, one of the tools that we needed, we didn't have, so it took an additional twenty minutes to get to the person in order to be able to work on them. And so it's, they're vital tools. Uh, Governor's Office Highway Safety requires that we supply them with a letter of compliance signed by the city manager and a resolution for the city council. Both have been provided in your packets. There will be one change, the letter of compliance. I re, uh, I recalled the vendors, because I saw an anomaly in the, in the post they gave me, and there's a forty-four dollar difference. So when, uh, the, if you allow you vote yes for this, the city manager, when he signs the letter of compliance, it'll be forty-four dollars more than the, the cost that's listed on there at present. And so I come before you asking for your permission to apply for this grant and follow through with the process.
Any questions or comments? A motion?
Second, motion by Councilman Galindo, second by Councilman Cortez. All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Should care.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify for a minute that, that the motion being made is, um, for the passage of Resolution 2020 dash zero zero two, which enables, the application of the, uh, highway safety.
The recommendations.
What's the...
Recommendations are stated. Recommendations stated for forty-four dollars.
Yes.
This question of also would act in to award the lowest bidder C-MEX construction material for the improvement and Council Avenue Sewer Lane for the week.
We're here, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Uh, the background for this item, an invitation to bid for the construction of the VOP mentioned as project. West Side, Vertices in Yuma, Daily Sun. A design work and a specification were prepared by our consultant core engineering group. Uh, the project involves the replacement of the sewer gravity main and sewer manifold, new vertical curb and gutter, sidewalk, sidewalk brands, and asphalt corners. Uh, the existing ABC material and AC mills will be reused as part of the new asphalt payment section. Uh, stone grain is also considered in this construction project. And in addition, a new parking lot will be constructed to provide better service to Council Park. Uh, currently, on Thursday, January twenty-eighth, we opened four seal bids for the VOP reference project. We, uh, revised and analyzed those bids to mills, and the results are attached in the bid evaluation record. Uh, the lowest bidder was C-MEX Construction Materials with a base bid amount of five hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-one cents, plus, uh, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents for the alternate bid, which is basically the parking lot for Council Park. Uh, the total project amount is six hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, which includes fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and thirty-one cents for contingency. The city should receive five hundred thousand from the Arizona Department of Housing as a CDPE SSP grant. And, uh, we had allocated a hundred thousand in city hoof and sewer CAP funds to complete this project. Uh, the total available funds for this project is six hundred thousand. As, if you can see, we have, we are requesting, uh, more amount of the six hundred thousand, which basically includes fifty-one thousand in contingency. So if we deduct the contingency from the six twenty-two, we still have five hundred seventy thousand dollars for, for complete this project. Um, Mayor and Council, do you have any questions at this point? Okay, for City, uh, our recommendation for City Council is to award the bid to C-MEX Construction Material in the base bid amount of six, six hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, uh, including, including the alternate bid for Council Park Lot and the fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and two dollars for contingency.
Any questions or comments? Your motion, someone, Mayor?
Motion by Councilman Lozano?
Sir.
Second, Vice Mayor Castillo. All those in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, um, some other comments?
Um, for COVID nineteen, we were at a four percent positivity rate for our zip code, uh, one out of twenty-one. So it, and it, and that result correlates with, with wastewater testing results as non-detected or level one, which means continued using the CDC guidelines for our community. Uh, our vaccine clinic, um, uh, I'll let, uh, Councilwoman Garcia speak on that, uh, for this Friday for five hundred. Also, I'll, I'll have her discuss or, or mention our migrant refugee release response team that we met today. Um, Ms. Garcia was part of that, uh, discussion, and she actually did help a lot this weekend with about thirty refugees that came in to the city of Somerton. March fifth and sixth is our annual retreat. Uh, March fifth will be here at Council Chambers. And March sixth will be at Somerton School District at the L Hollis Services Building. Also, March eleventh at five PM, there is a work-study session that I was invited to uh, for the Yuma Union High School, uh, Somerton High School. So I'll be attending that. Right, okay. Um, Mrs. Juarez?
Mayor and Council, uh, Community Development staff is working on a zoning ordinance text amendment to make several changes to the existing code to include the new regulations for the Smart and Safe Arizona Act, which will include regulations for recreational marijuana establishments, and will also include changes in, um, in the requirements for safety barriers for swimming pools in residential districts, among other changes that we are processing. Uh, the process for this text amendment will initiate in the next few days. Also, staff continue working on the new design guidelines manual to promote better and higher quality in the built environment of Somerton, and also to provide clear standards for the design of residential and non-residential development. Once the first draft of this manual is finalized, with staff will initiate the adoption process with public or informational meetings, introducing these documents to the community in general, before bringing it to council for potential adoption. That's all I have.
Chief Deong?
Um, I know Councilmember Garcia is going to address this, but, uh, this weekend was, uh, it held heavy on our personnel with the amount of calls we were receiving because of asylum seekers. We had four different calls occur, and, uh, all of them involved large groups. We had multiple transports with ambulances. And, uh, so they're coming across in groups. My biggest concern was really the group that came into town and, uh, resided at the church until they were, I don't know where they picked up, or they were eventually picked up. They were waiting there. But, uh, we have a large group like that, and it's, it's concerning to us as anybody that's in public safety. And of course, all you are aware at this time that this is going on. We expect more, of course, and so we're going to prepare as best we can for any event. Inspector Baixeros and Battalion Chief Harlos assisted with the county and, uh, Councilmember Garcia with the last vaccine clinic, and we'll be preparing with fire departments for, uh, any of the future clinics also. In my notes, I also put in there that, uh, the city of Yuma has been contacted by the state, and they're proposing to set up a twenty-four-hour-a-day clinic for a couple of weeks at the civic center. And so City of Yuma is requesting that we help, and we said that we will, as long as we're reimbursed, as long as we have the personnel and doesn't impact our services to the city. And so that may be upcoming real soon here. And I want to thank you for your vote on the subdivision.
Uh, Mayor and Council, an update on the Cesar Chavez, uh, project. DPE, our contractor is working on the roadway final grade uh, between Spring Street and Jefferson. Uh, the plan is to begin paving next week, in order to have access for the, uh, uh, Highland County School. Uh, and also an update on the high school sewer improvement plan. Our consultant Jim David and associates submitted a ninety percent design plan. We're going to perform the review of this plan and send comments if any to our consultant this week. Thank you.
Victor?
There are a few updates. Uh, you know, the, uh, Michoacana Plaza is already in the construction. And we're looking at our schedule to do a groundbreaking ceremony. We know it's already started, but, uh, and they asked, uh, we can do a, a groundbreaking schedule, probably, uh, either next week or this Friday. We're looking to discuss this. The second one, we expect in a new restaurant coming on down. It's the, uh, called, uh, Campus. Yeah, Asalero Campus. It's going to be where the Casa Gloria used to be. Uh, that location, it was broken down in, I think, in three, three suites. They taken the first suite, thirteen A. And I was talking to the business owner, Jesus Campa, this morning, and he's actually the, uh, grand, grand key of the, uh, the original. The Campa Business and San Luis Yocorral.
Wow.
If that's the case, uh, the taquitos are really, really good. Thank you, Mayor.
What is that? Tacos open?
Chief, Chief Juarez, are you there?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, good evening, Council and, um, Mayor. Um, my report real quick today is our grant for the Operation Soul Guarding has been awarded for this year in the amount of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. All our staff has been busy handling the attempted homicide shooting that occurred last month about a week ago, with plenty of follow-ups to continue. Uh, we have a team working on purging some of the continued evidence room and the records room as well for old reports that already have expired. Our front lobby has opened up, and we have begun to see some traffic, mostly for fingerprint services. And lastly, our police academy graduation will be held this Thursday on the fourth at three PM at the AWC Amphitheater. Everybody is welcome to attend, as long as, uh, we're wearing a mask. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Sarina? Ms. Gallegos? I know she's in her, I know she's in her office. Uh, she's been meeting, she started meeting with the departments for our twenty twenty-two uh budget, which includes obviously personnel, C F P, uh, preparing uh revenue information for retreat, and all utility billings were submitted today as well. Um, Assistant Director, Director Jesus Mesa?
Good evening, um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Just wanna report that um our staff adjusted the maintenance schedule, and we restocked for supplies for um C nineteen uh for C nineteen um preventive measures, and we opened in City Hall as of yesterday, March first. Also, we met with N E I to review the H back placement area for units just to um complement the mechanical load analysis that is going on right now for the sixty-five percent um design report. Also, our staff is doing um S O Ps, standard uh operating procedures for parks and facilities to um establish procedures for maintenance and projects. That's it.
Thank you, uh. Mr. Lozano, anything for M H R?
Uh, Mayor and Council, our compensation study or salary survey by public sector is is close to completion. We will have a presentation coming up uh shortly in the next couple of weeks so that you can uh take a look at that. And also, the R F P went out for our insurance and and health benefits uh this week. Our broker this year is Capital Financial, we did change brokers, and uh we're anticipating a couple of changes in our plans, and those will also be brought to you earlier this year than than last year so that you guys can make a decision on on our health insurance benefits.
To conclude.
Nobody has to mention and mentioning Councilmember Garcia as a person.
Um, wanted to update you guys on um this last Friday, vaccine clinic, it went very well. We were able um to vaccinate three hundred and ninety um residents. Those included, I think, doctors for our first clinic. Um, we were able to include um the original school district because the lack of vaccine that's been trickling in from previous appointment. Um, we have another one scheduled this Friday for five hundred. Um, we will have registration tomorrow, November twelfth. I really, really wanna thank Adryssa McGrue, Josh Segura, um Alexis, uh Mr. Cabrera, Mr. uh Chief Paul, the Danda's team, um, gave the best of um, but uh with the help of registering people and calling people, um, it's long night, but I think, um, you know, with with our numbers going down, you know, we we need to get as many people vaccinated as, you know, we want, you know, who we can and hopefully keep those numbers down. Um, in regards to uh this weekend, uh, yes, the patrol migrants who were dropped off here in Somerton that needed, that wanted to present themselves to the border patrol, but took a little while longer. I expected, um, we were told that first it would be about two or three hours, and then two or three hours turned through the whole weekend. So thanks to um Emma Torres, um, you know, providing them to stay at their church. They were, you know, better checked up on, um, no major issues as far as medical attention or or any issues, you know, with them. They were very grateful and we were able to keep in contact. I thought we can, border patrol had them picked up and they did come on Sunday around three. Again, no major issues there. But um during the meetings that we had last Friday and today, and I think um it's been shared with you, Mayor, about um having Somerton be um like a transportation hub as far as when they are released from border patrol here at the Yuma Sector, just have a a local place where they can come and be picked up and bus to either Phoenix, Tucson, or California for assistance in getting to their destination. Most of them, most of them have um places of destination already and and just need that assistance, um, getting tickets, plane tickets or bus tickets. But um, that's will continue, I believe, with uh the senators offices uh to continue the efforts with the local organizations to to keep the city, um, you know, migrants here. Again, they are released with a permit, they're here, they're allowed to be here legally, so there's no issues um with that. Um, and I think.
Councilwoman Villalpando?
I don't have anything, Mayor, thanks.
Councilman Lozano?
I just wanna give kudos to uh old staff, old city staff uh with the vaccine. Uh, before it was with uh Councilwoman Garcia for helping out and uh giving the vaccine for the Somerton residents. And all you guys, I worked very hard to do that, I really appreciate the efforts. Uh, I'd like to mention that we had a wake-up meeting last week, I believe, I think it was last week, and uh the C D B G background is already completed, so Somerton can apply for that kind of so. This is uh, they picked the societies to do that, and this time won't take to to apply for that again, so we should, that happens.
That is.
That's what happened.
Councilman Gortad?
Uh, the same, I had a, I took my mom to get uh to get her second dose of vaccine, and it just see a lot of residents killed by it. I think, yeah, that's what we're seeing. They all was together and also keep staff, you know, work out there, I think, to, you know, see the community come together to suggest this is something. And so I I noticed on the, on the report from Jerry that the city of Somerton received thirty thousand from Poco. Do we have, I know uh, they wanna see something being done so they can maybe buy them, so they can see why we're spending their money. Do we have a do we have ideas or?
We might not add it to the uh skate park as well.
Something missing.
Just, you know, wanna thank uh Councilwoman Garcia for helping the committee and her everything. I heard, you know, I think my positive comments from community members, uh, thank all staff, uh, you know, for uh everything was all organized, that's the feedback that I received. So it just goes to how well prepared, um, you know, e- everything happened, so. Um, also wanna thank, you know, Serena, we met on Tuesday, I'm I'm sorry, no, was it Thursday? You know, we took time to kind of review the uh um the budget, so thank you, Councilwoman Garcia, Mayor Gary, and, you know, uh, for taking that time and doing that. That's all that happened.
And so this weekend is our retreat, so hopefully everybody can make it. It's always good even to to meet and get together in that setting and hopefully here with the budget uh coming coming up, we can have our vision here for the for the future, start planning in, putting those uh effort improvements and also looking at, you know, what's to come, we're looking at benefits for that, so hopefully we have council members in the tent. Also, uh, our the forefronted meeting was supposed to be this Monday, and it was canceled, rescheduled. And then uh, not not tomorrow, but the following Wednesday. We have, the the mayors had a meeting every uh every month, but we haven't met since all the mass fiasco. So hopefully, uh, you know, we start meeting, and I know the asylum issue's gonna come, but we're still like, uh, Councilmember Garcia said, there's an issue of the discussion about having Somerton as a transportation hub. So hopefully there's more information to to the mayor, to the others. Always with this situation, different political opinions and approaches to to this issue. Hopefully, we can work together and and as a city, we can at least assist as uh and we're together with nonprofits, facility, process. And we have one item in concerned agenda, which is the uh the last, the last.
Executive session?
Yeah, uh, executive session. It's a vote to meet in executive session for discussion or consideration of the performance evaluation assignment from motion salary for Perry Cabrera, city manager, evaluation from the executive session. There are motion to adjourn into executive session.
If you're motion to adjourn, you have a question.
Motion by West Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think it was Councilman Gortad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any.
So take a five-minute break and then